All right, Eileen, opening statement, please.
Thank you. Planning Board meeting Thursday, June 3rd, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 8th, 2021, copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 8th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and you will need to provide your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and to lower your hand, press star nine again. In order to unmute yourself, you press star six and to mute star six once again. This meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thanks, Eileen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai, I guess it's not coming. Mr. Dorado's been excused. Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Present.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Casper?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Cristiano's been excused. Chairman Tannenhaus has been excused. Vice Chairman Husser?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And at the conclusion, please give a moment of silence for the men and women keeping us safe abroad.
Chief?
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you. Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
We have no minutes this evening.
And do we have any vouchers?
We have no vouchers this evening.
Okay, now I understand we have correspondence with the introduction of ordinance O-12-12 for the ML-12 zone that needs to be discussed.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And that's the only correspondence I have.
Does that need to be carried, being that the council didn't pass it?
No, no. They didn't even vote on, they introduced it, but they didn't vote on it. So we have to say whether it's consistent with the master plan or not. And they're having a public hearing on it, I believe, at their next meeting.
Okay, all right, sorry. So you just need a motion that is substantial with the master plan?
That's correct.
So moved.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
John, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. I have no other correspondence.
Great. Onto resolutions. The first being case number SP 1079 for 41 Kent Road LLC for preliminary site approval with ancillary variance relief. Eligible voters are myself, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Nacastro, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, Ms. Casper. And that is it. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry.
Sorry. No, go ahead, Chief, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve case number SP-107941 Kent Road LLC.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Okay, the next resolution is for case number SD 2995. Chris Alfaver with a resolution granting submission waivers. We have two eligible voters, the chief and myself. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve SD 2995.
Thanks, Chief, second.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, the next resolution is for case number SP 1012A for Eosso Brothers Incorporated. Resolution granting amended preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance relief. Eligible voters, myself, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Nacastro, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and Ms. Casper. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. And the last resolution is for case number SD 2996. 1294 Eaton Town Boulevard LLC. A resolution granting minor subdivision approval. Eligible voters, myself, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Leggio, Mr. Nacastro, Councilwoman Richmond, Mr. Seaman, and Ms. Casper. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to memorialize case number SD 2996.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries, resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is submission waivers. We have one for case number SP-1009A-3 for Par Golf LLC for an amended preliminary and final major site plan.
I have Mr. Cohen in the audience.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Todd Cohen for the applicant Par Golf. I apologize, for some reason I can't get my video going.
That's okay, let me just swear, Laura. And Laura, you swear or affirm testimony about to give this words, the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
So we have a May 21, 2021 review letter. The submission waivers are specifically outlined in item three. I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Cohen in advance of the hearing. And I just wanted to-
You're frozen, Laura.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Because this is a major development, a stormwater report will be required to be submitted. That's item 15. The 2,000-foot downstream drainage analysis should be provided and a land management plan should be provided because there is some clearing. So for the purpose, so I should say, I take no exception to the granting of the other waivers. However, as it relates to item 15, item 60, and item 85, those items need to be provided in order for the application to be deemed complete.
And the applicants agreeable to provide those?
Great. Does the board have any questions? If not, I will take a motion.
A motion to grant the submission waivers.
A second.
Thank you. Eileen, roll.
One second. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next on the agenda is our first application of the evening. It's for case number SP-1055 for 1228 Realty LLC for an extension of time.
Hello, call to here and on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I just take it away?
Go ahead, Mr. Cromer.
Okay, so this is just an application to extend the time that we have for our approval. The reason that we've been delaying is that we've had to explore options for sewage system on the property. We first thought that we would be able to connect to a service with the Manasquan Regional Sewage Authority. But it turned out that they're not going to service the small area that we are in, in Route 9. They're going to service properties across the street from us, but not where we are. Then we looked at New Jersey Water, see if they were going to offer sewage connections, and they weren't. We also had to explore the size of the system because the size, if it gets too big, can be cost prohibitive. So that's really been what's delaying and preventing this project from moving forward in addition to issues with COVID and getting people to work on the project. We think we got a solution for the septic system, but we're still exploring another option that is about connecting to a system in the vicinity. It's not like we've been sitting on it. I think we're really have to figure out this septic issue before-
Who sewer service area are you in? Are you in, are you in Mercer's or are you in the, on the townships? This particular property has to be in a sewer service area. It's either New Jersey American Water or-
It's not Manasquan Regional Sewer Service Area and it's not New Jersey American Water.
Mr. Cromer, where's this property located on Route 9? I know the address, but can you give us a landmark?
Um, hold on one second, please.
I know it's probably north of, north of West Farms, I'm assuming. I'll Google it.
Is this where the old Epi, where the Epi's is?
Not sure what was there before. I know that there was some office space there before. I don't know specifically what offices. It was made up of a small business offices, not large ones.
Is it Cherry Tree Plaza over by Swingtime?
That's what it looks like.
That's what it looks like is right. That's where it looks like, but-
There's an operating building right next to it. I'm trying to find it and I apologize on Google Maps.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like-
Now, this is, this is the, this is the abandoned office building that's right next to, across from One Stop. Next to the- Next to the, they have that place that sells like the scissor lifts and the cranes on the southbound side before Marco like jug handle.
Yeah, it's just into the bowling alley.
Yeah.
Or to see a car wash.
Yep. Okay.
And that's not New Jersey American Water?
That's what the engineer's reporting to me. The area across the street is Manasquan Regional Service Area. We were hoping that-
I mean, I think we have places where it pumps to Manasquan Regional. The only sewer service we have, I think, is New Jersey. I mean, everything else directly serves in Howell. It's the treatment facility, the treatment plant, but I don't think Manasquan provides service in Howell. I think it's Aquanet Jersey, but I would certainly- But that's, that's who I think the sewer pipe is there.
What's there now is a septic system. It's not connected to any sewer system at all.
I don't want to belabor this, but Laura, it's an extension of time. Is this the, or Ron, is this the first extension?
Yes.
It's the first extension, but they're seeking two one-year extensions. The approval was memorialized July 18th, 2019, which would bring their period of vested rights to July 18th, 2021. Two one-year extensions would bring it to July 18th, 2023.
Is there a reason for two years versus one year?
Well, I just think the, the challenge is too, is that we also have to deal with, and we are connecting with the Board of Health. So getting that moving along, we're expecting delays with that, and that's ultimately going to start or delay the start of construction.
I'll make a motion for the two-year extension.
It's two one-year extensions.
Two one-year, right.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Eileen, you're freezing up.
I have a motion. Yeah. Are we okay now, Chief?
I think it's on your end.
Yeah, you keep going in and out.
Pretty good here. You're good now.
Eileen, I made the motion to Chief second it.
Yes, we need a roll call. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yes, you too.
Okay. And the last, and yeah, this is the last application on tonight's agenda is for case number SP-1081. Cabin Realty LLC seeking preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance relief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I should be unmuted now, can you hear me?
Yeah, we have you, Mr. Jackson.
Hold on, you know what happened? I'm sorry, I have to compute, I have-
I have to remove one of them or we're going to get-
The one I'm speaking on now, please remove that one.
How's that?
All right, so I guess you removed the other one, that's okay, we'll get it.
All right.
I have it all set up. Sorry about that technical snafu. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Jackson, Ken Kittredge, Jackson, McQueenie, and Wells on behalf of the cabin, Cabin Realty, which is Chefs International Company. I'm here tonight with Mr. Jim Butler. He is the architect from Sonnenfeld and Trochia. He's performed the design also, Mr. Bob Cooper. He is the president of Chefs and also of the cabin. And also Mr. Jeff Carr, he is the engineer from Lindstrom Diesel Car, I see, as far as well. I don't know, how do we control the screen for a PowerPoint presentation? Do we, does the host do that or do I get straight screen sharing?
Well, just, just to begin with, Mr. Jackson- One moment.
There, now I hear you, thank you.
The PowerPoint, that contains everything that was previously submitted to Eileen, nothing new tonight.
Yes, and that was also previously submitted to your Board Secretary as well.
And that's why I meant Eileen.
A list of exhibits.
Okay. All right, so then just as you're going through it, Mr. Jackson, Eileen has pre-marked exhibits, so when you're, when you have a screen, if you could just refer to it by the exhibit number that Eileen has given to it.
Certainly, I don't, the PowerPoint, I thought it was number seven, do you have that exhibit?
A7.
A7.
Mr. Jackson, before you go, Eileen, do we have a quorum without me? Mr. Jackson-
Whole PowerPoint is A7.
That was a long time ago.
That's a long time ago. Ron, do I need to recuse myself?
What is a long time ago? Fifteen years ago. It's gotta be fifteen years ago, right?
Yeah, probably.
Fifteen, fifteen years ago, I think is enough time that has passed. You haven't had any other attorney-client relationship in the last fifteen years?
No.
Okay, and Mr. Nacastro, subjectively, you feel that Mr. Jackson, you know, Mr. Jackson's presence does not influence you one way or the other?
No, no way at all.
Okay, all right, you can, I don't find that there's a conflict that requires a recusal.
Okay, great, thanks, thank you very much. So if I can share the screen here. I'm referring to the PowerPoint, just please let me know when this comes up on your screen.
We have it.
Thank you. You know, the, the board is no doubt well familiar with the cabin. It's been somewhat of an iconic landmark for many years. And Chefs International bought it approximately three years ago. And it's been a very successful restaurant for them. And it's had an outdoor area that has been used in various ways over the years. And what Mr. Cooper is going to explain when he does his testimony is that they want to capture the summer mark. The experience with COVID is patrons very much enjoy the outside dining experience. And additionally, being a, I think Chefs has a 10 or 11 restaurants throughout the state. They've had them, you know, in other states as well, but now they're all in New Jersey. He finds that people like to be outside. And so this way, people in Howell and, you know, 15, 20 minutes away from this location, half an hour away, can come here rather than driving the 40 minutes to go inland to find, you know, the outdoor dining. We think that this will greatly complement the existing operation inside. We see them as different peak times. We think that full summer day, people want to eat outside and, you know, and in the winter and stuff, they won't. So we think it's kind of like a good way to get the market on both of them. So just to go through it quickly, of course, we have an overview and aerial to show where it is in the world on Route 33. There's an aerial a little closer in, the existing cabin restaurant, our site plan, or zoning table, or configuration, et cetera. There's our lighting plan. The, the yellow highlighted areas, Mr. Butler's going to testify that, that that is supplemented also with these type of hanging lights that has had a lot of success in chefs' other locations. They're basically a decoration. He's measured the candle power that they have at chefs' other locations. It's basically the minimus, but Mr. Butler will describe that. There's our, our, our plan and seating arrangement. There is the one that's updated. And, and it was submitted with our PowerPoint, so that the board has had it for quite some time. What we have done in order that we will not need a waiver on parking, Chefs has reconfigured the seating on the inside and the outside so that will reduce our seating count, will offer as a condition of approval if the board is inclined to accept this application allow us to reconfigure the seating a little bit so that we do not need a waiver for parking. And one of the, the main elements of that is evident in this picture here, and I'll expand it a little. You can see the inside bar that I'll, that I'll put the cursor on right now. Can you see my cursor? Great, thank you. You know, that, if you look at the original drawings, that was configured as a bar with seats around it. And one of the things that we can do there, and that was done, you know, before we realized we needed even the parking, was make that like a grab and go type of counter. So this is picking up on the existing theme of the cabin. We're hopeful that the board likes the job that Mr. Butler and his firm has done in the design. We think it's the right place for it. Then also we have our review letters, which we'll be going through shortly. So thank you for your indulgence in that overview. With your permission, I'd like to have Mr. Bob Cooper sworn. He will tell you about the chef, about chefs, the cabin, operations, low number of employees, operations like deliveries and garbage pickup and all those kinds of things that are important for Planning Board application.
Hey, Mr. Cooper, you on camera?
Yes.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Robert Cooper, CLO, E R. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Coachera. Mr. Cooper, can you please just briefly tell the board a little bit about Chefs International and your purchase of the cabin restaurant? What your particular role is in managing and operating not only everything in Chefs, but here? And, you know, the opportunities. Then I'm going to ask you about what we're doing.
Yes, we are really excited to have the cabin. We actually purchased it and closed it, closed up the deal, May of 2019. We bought it from Roddy and Tom Conliff, the, I guess they were original owners. I've been a Monmouth County resident most of my life. I grew up in Wall Township. I've been a employee of Chefs International since 1982. I started as a bartender out at our Hightstown location, which is still there. And I worked my way in, in the company to become the president, CEO since 2005. We operate 12 restaurants in Monmouth and Ocean County from Hightstown, which is Baker's American Bar Grill. We have Moore's Tavern in Freehold, Escondidos, obviously the cabin. We're working on renovating and Rod's Tavern in Seagird, Marina, Ninth Avenue Pier, Anchor Tavern, Riverside Lobster Shanty Patio Bar, and Water Street, Towns River.
Right, did you operate your restaurants like as a corporate entity? Do you use the employees and supplies and everything from one or does each one operate as its own standalone?
Well, they, they operate as their own standalone, but they're supported by the, the company. I oversee all the operations. I have multiple supervisors that see, oversee numerous stores and each store has their own management team. Collectively, we're over 1,000 employees in the summer. We get down to about 6, 700 in the winter. And-
So my point is, through your operations, if you're busy in one place, you can move your employees around. They all know the same system and they're all under the same supervision and, and you can basically cover things with materials and labor when you need it on a particular-
The systems in the restaurants are the same. They're different restaurants, they're different brands, but all the systems are the same. And then we, we actually encourage moving staff around, especially managers, to different locations. And certainly, you know, in the summertime, we need more staff down at the Jersey Shore in, you know, Belmar, Point Pleasant. Then in the winter, we bring some staff out to the cabin.
Let's talk about the cabin. Can you tell the board, you know, you've been in there operating it for, for two years now. Why do you see this proposal as something that you think would be beneficial for your company and for the community? What do you hope to accomplish?
What's usual for us with the cabin is that the, we do most of our business in the winter and in the summertime. And I think that this is consistent with Tom and Rod Conliff had it, that, you know, they were constantly trying to attract people in the summertime. The, the wintertime, it does real well. And to add a real serious outdoor amenity as opposed to just throwing some picnic tables out there, I think is going to, it's going to do a lot to keep, to keep the residents of Howell close to home. it's gonna do a lot to keep to keep the residents of howl close to home. I mean, I live down, I only live in Brielle, and I'm only fifteen, twenty minutes away, depending on traffic. And I like driving out there and to get away from the crowds. So we're excited. We're hoping to we're hoping to capture our winter business in the summertime. When in the summer, you know, there is not a wait in the dining room. We're hoping to get the people out here. There will be hopefully more people outside, but collectively, I don't see it all being full. People want to be outside in the summer.
The theme that you've come up with for this location and how you think it works with the theme that exists in the architecture, everything?
Well, the the theme, you know, it's always been the cabin. I think that, you know, when we took over, we recognized that there was a niche not being filled in the market for real smoke barbecue. And that is what we're we're concentrating on. We've we've kept a lot of the things that the cabin was great at. We didn't change any of the recipes. The pizzas are great. Steaks, prime ribs, seafood. And we just trimmed out some things so that we could add the real smoke barbecue. And then by doing this as a smokehouse type theme with, you know, real wood and in an action station where people can see the the cooking going on, I think it's going to be a real attraction to the area.
Do you have any experience on this location with outdoor dining as it is?
Well, we we do. Since COVID, the the town was nice enough to allow us to put a tent in the parking lot and and fence it in and do do outdoor dining, which has really got us going. Last summer, we were relatively surprised at how excited people were to be outside in that area. And that really prompted us to get moving on this project that we had kicked around since we purchased the cabin. I think, again, the Conlick brothers had planned on doing something with that building that's been sitting out in the parking lot and
All right. So let me just stop it for one moment. That's what be where the red dot is where it says the cabin restaurant. That's actually that building.
That's correct.
And just to orient the board, the improvements that you're doing, is it predominantly in the area of that building? And how do you will you use the building that was there?
Yes, it is in that. And we're we're hoping to extend to the east. And in that building, roughly half of that existing building is the the west half will be restrooms with three fixtures in each restroom. And then the east side of that building will be a kitchen. You know, full blown kitchen so that we're not just able to offer barbecue. We're able to offer a lot of the other things or our menu. It's our it's our intention to not doing do a lot of running back and forth to the restaurant. That's, you know, we're going to be self sufficient out in this space. And then the off of that building is, I don't know what Jim, how Jim would describe it, but a shed roof coming off. That's where all of the barbecue smoking process will be happening.
All right, let's just go over the basic site components. And and the engineer will will provide more detail about this. But where I have the cursor on right now, let me just what what are we looking at right here? Just explain this in in relationship to the building.
So you have the two, you have two driveways coming into that into that property to get to the to the parking lot in the back. The one that's on the screen now is the east. And then there's a center island, a double island for head on parking, two sided. And then there's the driveway that runs right next to the existing cabin building itself.
All right, let me just go back to the area. Well, this is probably better. This overall site plan right here. So we have the existing cabin building right here. We have the cursor.
Yes.
And that's the drive that you're talking about. We have the parking in the back. We have this is a drainage field, correct?
Yes.
And right here is where the new improvements is. So as as you come in past the original building where that building is on the left, when I zoom in on the site plan, we'll be talking about this area right here. That's where the amenity.
It's also, I think, important to point out that the the western driveway is one way in, and then the east driveway is two ways coming in and out. So easier access.
Okay, great. So I'm sorry, I let's just go down to the next picture. Okay, now tell us. So now we're looking at the area where that building is. If we could just do the orientation, this this is the street side out here, right? Where the menu just popped up?
That's Route thirty-three.
Route thirty-three. And then we have the shrubs that'll be along the front. So let's start with each of the buildings. First of all, how will this relate to the cabin, the the cabin restaurants that's there now? As far as hours, employees, operations will be the same operation? Will there be any separation? Explain how you envision that work.
It's going to be the same operation. It's going to be the same staff. If we were to staff the inside with fourteen servers on a Saturday night, it might be moved to six inside and eight outside. You might add a couple, but it's it's all under the same supervision, same management team is going to oversee it. And it's all the cabin. And we're looking at this as an as an enhanced amenity for what we're doing.
All right. So as as far as demand, do you envision both restaurants being fully occupied at the same time?
No.
Why is that?
Well, even now, if when we open the, when the outside is open, you know, under the the portable tent or the temporary tent, we don't open two of the dining rooms inside. We because more people are going to be outside. And so the main dining room in the main bar area will still do well because a lot of people still want to be in, you know, controlled atmosphere or the air conditioning or heat. And then the outside becomes more popular in the nice weather. And I like this evening, the outside isn't even open. There, you know, so the servers that would be working outside are covering what we call the wish room, which is the easternmost room of the existing cabin building.
All right. So I I've zoomed in a little on the on the rendering. Can you just give us an overall view of how this will work? Customer comes in, where they go? How do they circulate? Where's the food come? Where's the food be cooked, et cetera?
Well, there's there's really one control point for people to get in. And I think it's at the in the middle of the screen. There's a couple of lights there with a couple of pink trees. And that's where they're going to be coming in to
Right here, can you see my cursor, everyone?
That's going to be entering the property.
So you'll park back in here and then the entry will be coming coming toward this way. Okay.
Yes. And the bar would be to the left. And then to the directly to the right would be a bandstand. And to the right of that would be that grab and go bar. And that grab and go bar would be really for for folks that just want to hang out.
Maybe it'd be better if you moved the cursor.
You know, the grab and go bar would be for more of the people that want a real casual experience. They they not requiring service. They might want to just get an appetizer and a drink. We're showing picnic tables here with, there'll be a couple of another row. I think it shows in the updated rendering. These would be for like six people and then two people. And then this area here, we're for people that want to be close to the band and see see what the band is. We, you know, we don't, we won't do the band past ten o'clock. I'm hoping that, you know, one of the things that's been lost in COVID during the pandemic is the later in the evening business. And I'm hoping that, you know, we can kind of get that back going at the cabin itself.
Inside.
Inside, yeah. And and then this building here where the curse is, this is, you can see the stacks here for ventilation. There's two eighty-four inch smokers here. There's a little storage, which you'll see in the next drawing. And then this area here is where the kitchen is. And then the restrooms are over here.
Can you tell us the the number of employees?
In the winter, we have thirty-nine employees maximum on the shift. And I I can break it down. If you're interested in that, I can break it down to where they are. And that would be the maximum. That's like a Saturday night in the in the wintertime. And what we're proposing is forty-four in in the summer. And currently, we're thirty-two.
So some some employees would work inside, someone move back and forth depending on the weather.
Correct. You know, they might be scheduled to work at a certain time. And then the manager of the side, based on the weather, whether they're going to work inside or outside.
Explain how deliveries will work. How do you get your food and and the beer deliveries and that kind of thing?
All deliveries are going to be accepted back here where they've always been accepted behind the cabin. So the the trucks will come in and then they back in to the space behind the cabin where there's two kitchen doors. One of the one of them leads into the main cabin kitchen. And then one of them, it's actually set up pretty nice where they can go straight down the stairs into the basement prep kitchen.
What what about hours of operation? For the inside and the outside, the overall?
Yeah, whatever the ordinance allows. I mean, we're we're open eleven thirty daily. And we close at two o'clock on Friday and Saturday, but I don't anticipate that being the case with the outside. We in the when, you know, there oftentimes, you know, we're closing earlier than that, like Sundays now, it's midnight. And it's really kind of, it's so much different now since since the pandemic, you know. If people aren't going to be there at night, we're not going to pay people standing around waiting for them.
So we we've changed the seating a little bit. And that evolved. Why does the seating change as you go through your different designs? And you look at it and you work on it. And and where are we at now in terms of the number of seats?
Well, where are we at? Okay, so what we have, what we have now existing inside the main cabin building is a hundred and sixty-four seats at tables. And then we have two bars inside with a total of fifty-four seats for a total of two hundred and eighteen seats. We're proposing to add a hundred and fifty-one seats outs and then thirty-eight bars bar seats outside for one eighty-nine. And the total would be four oh seven. Three hundred and fifteen of them would be tables seating and ninety-two bar seats for a total of four oh seven. This will only be open in the nice weather. That's the important thing to point out. It's this is not, we're going to have people out here, you know, in in the wintertime.
So one, you know, some of the plans show pictures around this outside grab and go bar, you said. Now, this rendering was done months ago, right?
We started working on this a long time ago, and the world has changed since we started working on it. That's why we kind of fumbled around trying to figure out the seating, because for the longest time, you know, we had less, far less seats than inside until recently, when things opened back up, more back to normal.
Why do you see a grab and go bar being successful at that, you know, that type of setup?
Just just again, you know, the casual nature of it, you know, you you know, it's just easy if you don't want, you know, you don't want to stack people behind other people reaching over to get a drink if it happens to be like seven o'clock, the peak peak time. And they have a space they can go. And that's, you know, there's some TVs there. It's going to be a real casual setting, you know, that back wall. That area with the wall in the shed shed roof or wanting to guess it's a shed roof. Behind that, you see a bump out in the back. That's where all the wood is going to be stored for the for the smoking operation. So that doubles as a storage area.
I I've zoomed in and you can see the the lights. I know there's a lighting plan that Mr. Butler will talk about. He has the actual, you know, the schematics for that. Do you have experience with the particular kind of light that we're showing there? And, you know, why why do you like it? Why do you propose it here?
Well, we do. We use these several locations, probably seven or eight of our locations. We use these lights in all of our outdoor areas. It's, you know, we purchase them at Home Depot. You plug them in, you know, they connect together, easy to replace. And it's it it's a nice ambiance. It does. You don't have to worry about it being too bright. People don't want to be in a in a real bright environment. You know, you want it to be bright enough to be safe, but you want to be comfortable. They don't want a light glaring on them. So this is, we use this at the Ninth Avenue Pier. We use it at the Marina Grill, Wharf Side Patio Bar. We're using it currently in the parking lot at the cabin for last years. And we find it to be, you know, really, you know, a good solution.
The ban that you would agree to have no ban outside after ten P M. Is that the type of restriction you're used to in some of your other places?
You know, we thought, you know, maybe out here, you know, it's a little bit more rural and we we might be able to go a little bit further. The one night we had the band go past, we hadn't played, planned to play past eleven. We got a call from one of the neighbors, so we shut it down. We said, you know, we're not going to start fighting with our neighbors. We're going to shut it down at ten o'clock. And then hopefully, we can generate enough interest in the in the place that, you know, people will go inside and listen to music after ten o'clock.
Okay, so you envision the bands continuing or a different band, maybe, but up at the inside and 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 that's
That's that is, that that would be the goal. If the people aren't there, I'm not going to pay a bear.
And and that's something you don't have that restriction now. You agreed to do it after you got a call from a neighbor.
Yeah, one lady called and that's all we needed.
Okay. Right. I think I've covered all of the, there is one other thing I want to discuss. There is a a home that we can see just on the bottom of the screen here. Is that the house? Can you explain who owns that, what the relationships of?
We when we purchased that, we purchased it with the property. It was part of the deal. So that that's our property. We have people that we rented to.
It's under your control and if that those are all the questions I have for Mr. Cooper about operations, employees, et cetera. Mr. Butler will cover the architectural layout in a little more detail. And then I'm going to have Mr. Carr discuss the 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 site plan. I now offer Mr. Cooper for questions.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Cooper. Board, any questions?
Very nice concept.
Thank you.
Chief Kudrick.
Yes, sir. I know where you're going with this, John. Go ahead.
Do we have any any concerns? I have the tree line. I see there's a fence behind the tree line. Is there any concerns with, you know, with being Route thirty-three, if there was, God forbid, a car lose control when the people are hanging out out there? You know, at night busting through the tree line and the fence line, you know, is there? Does that does our engineering department maybe propose a berm? Or something else? I'm just, you know, for safety?
If anything, I think they'll probably get into that. I guess architecture or engineering, I would assume, right? I mean, that's that's a question that can be posed for the for the engineer. Yes.
I would agree.
Yeah. Yeah. But John, definitely valid concern. I was looking at that as well.
Yeah, that's the, that's a busy road. That's a busy road, so.
I think that's more for the engineer. I think this is just questions for the operations.
But I can, I can go off of what what Bob Cooper said about being a good community partner. They absolutely are. Our calls for service since Chefs International took over is basically zero.
Fantastic.
They work very well with us and zero issues there as opposed to the former owners.
Yeah, I used to bounce there when I was a kid.
I actually have a question. I'm sorry. May I, Vice Chair? And I'm sorry if this is Councilwoman Richmond. Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay. And I I'm sorry if I did miss this. So outside is only going to be barbecue? No table service?
No, no, it's it's going to be full service and
Okay.
And and there's going to be a limited menu. It's not going to have the entire cabin menu. It's certainly going to be enough there. It's not just barbecue. There'll be sandwiches. There'll be
Okay.
Yeah, it's it's
I I've been there in the summer and I saw the difference. But so I guess my next question is, the kitchen operation is still in the original building and they'll be walking across the parking lot?
Oh, there's there's two. What we did on here on the use cursor, this, the existing building is here. We were at Anteater. And this whole section here is a full restaurant kitchen. We're putting all equipment in there, hoodster, you know, hood system, walk-in coolers. So we're really trying to minimize the the crossover from main
Okay.
We're going to have to bring, you know, we're going to have to bring raw materials over and that will be done in the morning. But, you know, we're not going to be ordering something and their servers running across the parking lot on the side.
Okay. Well, I just know from where the tent was and the the poor servers, they get a lot of steps in from the kitchen to the tent. So I wasn't sure if there'd be crossing that one-way driveway coming in and, you know,
Yeah. That was last year. This year, we were able to enhance the and make that bar a not they they can get anything they want. So the servers aren't crossing the parking lot at all now. The food runners will bring the food out, but the servers are planted out.
Okay, good. Does anybody get hit by a car when they're serving somebody a burger?
That's for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Seeing none. Ron, is this something we open up to the public for questions? I see there's there's three on there just relating to operations only.
Mr. Chair, you can do one of two things. You can wait till everybody testifies and then open it to the public, or you can open it as each individual witness testifies, but the public gets a say one way or the other.
Yeah, I think with the with the board's permission and agreement, but let's wait until everybody gives their testimony and we'll open it up then.
Thank you, Chairman. Then with your permission, if I could call Mr. Jim Butler and have him qualified as an expert in the field of architecture?
Absolutely.
Hey, Mr. Butler, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
James Butler, B U T L E R.
Mr. Butler, can you please tell the board your licensure and your field of expertise?
Licensed in the state of New Jersey for nineteen years. Primarily do commercial work within the firm. Primarily do commercial work within the firm. Uh we've been working with Chef's International for a number of years on many of their restaurants and um.
So of course, that's a licensed architect, right?
Licensed architect, yes.
And have you appeared before boards and testified?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair, are you satisfied?
Yeah, we'll we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you. All right, uh would you like me to start with the floor plan? We'll talk about that, or you want me to uh go to the elevations and we'll talk about the architectural features?
Uh if you want to go to the elevations or the or even the rendering.
The rendering, okay. Let me just, I keep doing that. Hold on. Best laid plans. I had my other computer. There we go. All right, let's let's start with what are we looking at here?
Okay, so um. One of the important things that that um Chef's International um came to us with when we when we started this plan was to. Um continue the existing theme. Of the cabin through this space. And what we've done is many of the buildings that you see um continue that horizontal log siding. That will be applying to uh one, the existing building and um some of the other features that are that are in the site.
So this will be a log cabin.
It's gonna be a log cabin design throughout. There'll be some heavy, you know, some timber frame structures. Uh we, the log cabin, you know, we want to do the the split rail fence. Um just to kind of keep in that same theme of everything. It's it's worked for years and and that's what uh Mr. Cooper wanted to continue through this site.
So standing seam roof, you'll have posts.
Standing seam roof, wood posts, um open that that main dining area will be open to above. Um so you'll see the timber frame and it's the same thing in the area where the uh the smokers are. Um same type of a structure where it's gonna be open to above with the with the metal standing seam roof.
These areas over here, what what are, what are the these?
Those are just some areas of casual seating um where they're they're defined by uh four. Posts in each in each section where there'll be a canvas awning of some type and um. You know, you might have lounge-type seating like a couch or a or a chair of some type, outward type furnitures.
You you heard Mr. Cooper's testimony about the uh the the number of seats. So you worked with him and you refined the designs and the number of seats we're asking for works with the parking and.
Yes.
That's all reasonable amount of seating.
Yes.
We're satisfied with that. So I I won't repeat those numbers because he was right next to Mr. Cooper with your permission. Okay. So let let's now talk about the actual uh floor plan. As I scroll through these, by the way, these are just your your.
Those are, those are the um the elevations drawn of each of the buildings within the within the site. You know, there's the bandstand and then there's the uh the bar two. Or the or grab and go bar elevations and the the dining area elevations up above. And then that's the uh. The upper part is the um new kitchen area and bathrooms and then to the right is the uh the barbecue area. Top elevation.
Right, so what are we looking at right here?
So right now you're looking at the plan.
Put that blue. There we go. Thank you.
So right now you're looking at the plan and as um. As Mr. Cooper said, that the 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 patrons will come in this way uh through the back area here. And um. You know, to the to the left is gonna be the main bar and dining canopy. Um it'll be all open.
To the left as you walk in. It's the right, on the right side of the screen.
I'm sorry, yes, the the left as you walk in on the right side of the screen. It's an open structure. Right, there is a.
So just, you know, I know people can look at this, but I just want to make sure. So the these are all tables around the bar.
There's tables around the bar and you'll see the circles around the outside of the perimeter. Those, that's landscaping.
So up here is landscaping and then these, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, this is all landscaping that I'm showing here. And then this is the table seating within the bar area. Dining area and then you have the bar area right here.
So just the seats that are shown on here are a little higher than will actually.
Yeah.
You've reduced it.
Yeah, we've reduced a few, yeah.
Okay. So all right, let's talk about, now there was a question uh by the councilwoman about the kitchen.
Yeah, this 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 area right here is the kitchen area. Um and it has access directly into the barbecue pit area.
How do you envision that kitchen? Is that something that's behind a wall or will the patrons be able to see the people?
No, they'll be able to see this. There's a window. There's a window that'll open up right here. To allow service. So people will be able to see into this kitchen and see the activity. And then same thing with the with the pit area is, you know. Mr. Cooper wants everybody to see what's happening in the pit area. So that's, there'll be a safe-off area where people can't wander in there. But they'll be able to see the activity that's going on in that pit area.
That's all part of the uh, you know, the the enjoyment of going out to this type of thing.
Experience of it.
So that's an important part of the business plan.
Yes.
Um and I imagine you'll have all nice industrial state-of-the-art hoods and whatever grills. Uh that's all part of the look, for lack of a better term. So speaking about the look. How would you describe this? Is it like a a clean industrial type of look barbecue? Is it stainless steel? How will you?
I think it's more of an industrial. It's more of an industrial look, like a rustic, yeah, with the heavy timber makes it, helps to make it that rustic look. You know, you you have the the log cabin, which there'll be actual logs, you know. Log siding on this building here. Um and then you're gonna transition into the um heavy timber look and it might have. Plates on the framing and stuff, just to give it that rustic. Look.
All right, so uh I I now uh we we have, we we'll meet all codes as far as.
Yes.
Number of bathrooms and that kind of thing. We're all.
Yeah, we we actually, um those bathrooms, what we have seated here.
And I'll get into this with Mr. Carr a little bit, but we heard a discussion on the on the last application about where we we have septic fields that are, you know, will be made to handle all this and that'll all be a condition of approval.
Right.
If the board grants us, okay. So um now the lighting, let's let's talk about the lighting. I know that uh. The board engineer, uh or maybe it was a planner, or maybe it was both of them, said that we had better have a good lighting plan.
Yeah, so what?
Tell us what this is.
What we did here was we um selected uh some fixtures that we would like to see. Um throughout the uh throughout the site and a consultant has generated this. I said, or this uh photometric lighting plan to give an idea of. How bright this space will be. And um you'll see a line. As it wraps around here. And once you get beyond that point. The lighting from this site will not spill, you know, doesn't spill beyond that point based on the fixtures that we selected here. Now, what this doesn't show is um as I've indicated in the yellow, they don't have. Um they call them I E S files, which tell you how each fixture is gonna, how bright each fixture will will. You know, illuminate, you know, at the at the ground level. They don't have that for string lights. So what I did was um, I went out and did a study on on Mr. Cooper's uh other restaurants and um, you know, that's they range. You know, they want to have a range of two to five. To eight-foot candles in the dining areas. That's a comfortable level of of dining.
So what we'll have is we'll have these string lights. I'll call them. And uh in your opinion, based on your investigation, your measurements, uh being at the other locations where these are in play. Will they have a uh, you know, material impact on on the actual lighting plan?
Very low, very low impact um on on the lighting plan.
So would you describe them as mainly decorative?
Yeah, yeah, they're decorative um type fixtures and it's, they're they're no different than what people put on their back decks or or um. You know, you see them in in outdoor restaurants all over, um but there's just minimal impact on on.
Okay, I I really don't think there's uh much more that I have to cover from the architect. Uh I would offer Mr. Butler now to the board for any questions uh related to the architecture.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Um. Any questions from board or I guess more importantly, Laura or Christine? Or Shari?
Not based, I don't have anything based upon the architectural um testimony that's been provided.
I also don't have anything based on the architectural testimony.
I I I have one question. I don't know if it, if it's if it's more engineering or architectural, but I saw the letter from the Fire Bureau regarding the service entrance on the west side. Um and they're recommending a removable fence post or a swing-type gate with a minimum of twelve foot wide. Is that something agreeable?
Well, we'll have Mr. Carr discuss that. I mean, offhand, I don't, I don't recall.
Oh, that's this, this.
That's the area over here.
I don't think that's a problem.
Uh Mr. Cooper says he doesn't believe there that's a problem. Uh we will address that with Mr. Carr, uh with your permission, who's my next witness, Chairman.
If there's uh no other questions. Let's let's bring up the next one.
Are my uh emails popping up on the board screen when I get every now?
I don't see it.
Okay, good, because I hope one of my clients doesn't confess to a murder. Okay, Mr. Carr, are you on screen?
Mr. Carr.
Yes, I was trying to unmute. Yes, I'm here.
Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Uh Jeffrey Carr, C A R R. I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional planner, state of New Jersey, um principal with the firm of Lynch and Deesner Carr.
We'll accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Clark, uh while I have the overhead uh picture, can you just tell us the zone, the location, general lay of the land? And a a brief overview of uh what we propose, then I'll take you through the specifics of the site.
Yes, um and I'll try to make it quick because I I I think you heard a lot of testimony from uh uh Mr. Cooper and and Mr. Butler. But uh and everybody I I I hope is familiar with the site, but uh as you see on the picture, Route thirty-three is on the top of the plan. Where that red dot is, is really the focus of of what we're talking about. To the left is the uh existing cabin restaurant. So we're we're basically focusing in the area from where that red dot is, the existing building uh over towards the right. Uh we'll reconfigure the parking lot a little bit. Uh we'll add some grass area and those are where the structures are going to be. So it's all internally within the site.
Right, um I put the site plan up. Uh I don't think you mentioned the zone.
Uh zone, it's it's in the H D highway uh uh H D dash two highway development zone, uh so it's allowed use within the zone.
All right, I have the site plan up. Um some of the issues I'll I'll point you to that are raised in the uh in the review letters. Um we we need variances uh for for buffers um and and et cetera. So let's just talk about the perimeter of the site. Tell the board what's uh around the perimeter and what features are in there and why you think uh if you do, that it's appropriate uh for for the relief that we're looking for. First, we we have an existing site and existing building that's out on the.
Right, a- a- as you're looking at the site here, um you know, it it pretty much speaks for itself. Uh the cabin's uh close to the road. The building that we're gonna renovate is close to the road. Uh they're uh roughly twenty-five feet off of the right-of-way line. Uh everything.
Interrupt you for one moment. I'm gonna, you know, jump to your uh the planning part of your expertise. So we're 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 in a C-one hardship circumstance based on law, business uh structures roughly on the premises. And um and we're also seeking variances under C-two. Is that fair?
That that's that's correct. And for the most part, um the 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 features are existing, the variances are existing. Uh to some degree, we may exacerbate them, uh but I'll I'll go into a little detail on that. Um uh for instance, the the existing building that we're gonna renovate, that that's an in in existing variant situation. Uh however, we're gonna increase that because we're gonna expand it uh horizontally along Route thirty-three. We're not moving any closer, but we're we're making it a a a longer building. And the covered pit, um that would fall into that same situation where we need a front yard variance. Uh but it's also an open structure. Now, some of the mitigating circumstances on on at least those couple of items. Is that there's an existing fence there. It's a basically a slatted fence, uh so it's somewhat open, somewhat screened. Uh basically offers uh uh, you know, screening of that area. And then you saw on on the rendering, there's some vegetation there to the right or in front of the existing building. Or some larger uh evergreen shrubs and then some smaller long ones along the fence. So that already uh somewhat mitigates. The the existing variance and and does so for the proposed variance as well. Uh the covered bar behind that e- existing building, technically, that would be in a variant situation also. Because it would be within that that setback area uh or or buffer area, partly, uh it would just encroach on it. Uh but again, that's behind the existing building, so so it's a, it's a de minimis intrusion there. Uh and again, I think it's keeping in with the whole scheme of of the restaurant and what we're doing. This is appropriate because we're taking an existing building and and pointing it to a better use. Uh we're actually reducing the impervious coverage on the site, uh not by uh uh a a ton. But uh it is, it is changing it somewhat. We're reducing it by about seventeen hundred square feet. Um so we're breaking up that and putting some lawn area there and we're adding some landscaping in those areas as well. So that's gonna mitigate uh that use of the buffer as well.
All right, Mr. Carr, what I'm going to do with the chairman's permission, I'm going to uh direct your attention to the March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one uh view letter from uh Ms. Bean. And I I think that's the latest, right? And uh what with with the chairman's permission, I'm gonna ask leading questions about uh the variances and then I'm gonna ask you the the reasons for them and we'll point to them on the site plan. Uh there's the bulk requirements there. We're we're a hundred and forty thousand square feet. We're eighty thousand required. So we have a big lot, right?
That's correct.
And and all our existing improvements, the parking lot are there. Not all our existing improvements, but the main building, the building that we're renovating and the area that we want to use, that that's all there and it's located out towards the highway, right?
That is correct.
So under B, uh we're looking for twenty-seven feet and that's an existing non-conformity versus sixty?
Correct.
As a practical matter, is there anything we can do about that or is that just it it is?
No, that's an existing one. If the board denied this application, that that would continue to exist in a variant situation.
Now, do you, as a planner and as a civil engineer, do you see any detriments or any issues with allowing this type of an amenity out closer to Route thirty-three than the sixty feet that is required under the ordinance? And if so, please explain.
No, I I I don't. It's it's it. For for a number of reasons, I I think it's appropriate. Again, I think the main reason is we're taking an existing building that uh is being underutilized. And we're making it more appropriate in there. Uh it's less of an impact, uh I'm sorry?
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's it's less of an impact on on the parking. Um and it's 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 also a visual effect here. Um I I I think the visual effect for. How and and you saw how the continuity between the structures and the looks of these structures and the cabin and the theme that goes along the two. I think it's uh also a site amenity, uh so that I think it'll enhance the view along Route thirty-three.
Well, one one of the uh things that was brought up by uh several board members and and the police chief is the uh location of the outdoor seating area with the vegetation. Uh in proximity to Route thirty-three and whether that could be uh a safer situation, whether it's good. Could you please address that particular concern while we have the site plan up there?
I guess I, yeah, I I I guess that could always be a concern. Um I I I really didn't think of that uh beforehand. But uh certainly, I think one of the items, um and and I can certainly work with the board engineer on this. Um maybe if you can zoom in to the uh where the picnic table seating area is. As I indicated, there is is the building there on on the right-hand side of that area. And perhaps what might be appropriate is along that picnic table seating area um and those um screened. Uh uh whatever you want to call them, the sunscreen area there.
Right, right here.
Maybe, right. And and I would think that it might be appropriate along that area behind the fence or or on the. Side where we're making the improvements, that we could put a timber guide rail in there. So it would be behind the shrubs. It would be behind the existing fence, so wouldn't, wouldn't be a vis- visible thing from State Highway uh from the from the roadway. But I think it has the same effect as as any guide rail would be. And I think being a timber guide rail, which we've used very often. Uh would offer that that additional protection in there. Um probably right along those, that that outside post area there. Behind the fence and and. E- exactly, right along that area. I think one, from the roadside, you wouldn't be able to see it. But from the interior side, I think with the uh with the wood guide rail. Um it would also lend itself to a visual effect inside, so it wouldn't be um. it would also lend itself to a visual effect inside, so it wouldn't be aesthetically inside. I don't think it would have any, have any effect there, and I think, you know, that might be an appropriate resolution of that concern.
All right, let's go on to C, and I'm sure, go ahead, I'm sorry, someone tried to say something.
Yeah, it's the chief. Mr. Carr, in reference to the placement of that wooden guardrail, would it be more appropriate to maybe put it behind the bushes and in front of the fence line? That way, if we do get an out of control car, it's not sending fence debris into that.
That's, we could look at that also. I just wasn't sure. I've been to the site a number of times, but I remember how close those trees in the fence were. That was my first inclination is to put it behind the shrubs and in front of the fence, and I think.
I would agree.
Certainly, we can look at that.
Would cover it up.
Yeah. By moving things that are there, we'll accomplish that.
Sure, we could do that.
You can do that. All right, so let's go on to letter C, talks about the height, an existing nonconformity, 25, the height of the 24.7, based on the height, we basically covered that, right?
Yes.
The side yard setback for an accessory structure, a shed there on the western property line, that's a nonconformity. I believe that's the shout here by where these cars are. Let me take, go back to your.
Yes, that's behind the cabin restaurant, that's existing. It's not being affected by what we're doing here. You'd have to go, yes, you'd have to go to that plan, all the way to the right.
That's this?
No, no, where? Actually, actually, if you see that stone area, it's a very small shed. Go up, up a little bit right there, right? Well, with your cursor, right about, just above where your cursor is.
Okay, right, right there. I just can't see it in the dark and then.
It's actually very small, you can almost.
Oh, I got it, right there. And Mr., you know, we think that's not bothering anyone. It comes in handy, we could use it. But if that's an issue and the board wants us to remove that shed, we could do that, right?
Yeah, it's behind the fence, and it's been there. I'm pretty sure it's been there before.
We'll abide by the board's directive like that, like we will on everything, obviously. Yeah, the required setback, 60 feet, 25, we discussed that again in item A. Item F, front yard again, 58 to the covered bar, 60 feet, so that's only two feet, but.
Basically, the water area, but that's behind the kitchen and barbecue pit area.
And there's all those same issues with G, H, and I as well, correct?
Well, G is the parking.
Let me, let me go to that. The required set, it's. No, G is, G is in the letter of March 18th.
That's what I have. I'm looking at March 18th.
H and I are the picnic table seating in the barbecue pit area. I think that might be what you're looking.
That's what I'm referring to. It's just above number three on page three of five.
Okay, I'm on three, 3G. Sorry, I'm ahead of you. Yes, sorry about that. Those, those would be the same, same.
So under 3A, fences should not be higher than four feet. Fences and walls located, we propose a six-foot-high vinyl fence in the front yard area, variance is needed for that.
Right, and I, we would amend our plans, the existing eight-foot fence or the fence that's along the property line in the front, behind the shrubs, we would maintain that, that's an existing situation. I had showed a vinyl fence on the interior side behind the, what do you call it, walk-up, walk-up bar there, but parking, and as you saw on the rendering, it's a posted rail fence. We would amend our plans to remove the vinyl fence and show a posted rail fence in keeping with the architectural rendering.
Item B, now, just explain that, that's the 50-foot perimeter buffer, buffer, or farmland buffer easement. Explain why we're seeking a variance from that particular requirement.
Effectively, the entire front yard is part of the 50-foot buffer as well as the side yards. Most of the site is developed, as I just, as we just indicated, with the existing building, the cabin restaurant, you know, a lot of features. Even the parking that exists now is within that buffer area. We're going to remove some of the parking, but the whole essence of our application is to place this amenity in this location next to that building. So I don't know that effectively we're changing anything existing-wise that a person driving down Route 33 sees. In fact, if anything, I would say that we're enhancing it. I think visually, it'll have a better visual impact than what's there today. So again, while it may not be a true buffer, I'm not sure what you effectively would want to be buffering to Route 33 anyway.
And the photograph that's incorporated into our rendering that I have up now on page 16 of our PowerPoint, that basically shows the existing conditions in your view.
So that lawn area and those shrubs and the fence we just talked about will remain. So it's the thing, it's the items behind the fence, and I think aesthetically, I think certainly the building that's being improved and the smokehouse area, open smokehouse area, I think those are features that I think will enhance it. And to the left, you'll see, I don't know if those are exact what's there, but you'll see some evergreens on the left-hand side or lower left-hand side of the plant. Whatever's there existing will remain existing, so we're really not affecting the streetscape.
So C and D are basically the same circumstance, right?
Correct.
Okay, on E, one loading space is required, no loading is required.
As Mr. Cooper indicated, the loading spaces are existing. They're behind the existing restaurant, that's where all the loading for food and everything. And then the day of, they may be bringing stuff into this area before the restaurant opens into that kitchen, restocking that area, but all offloading will be in the main cabin restaurant building.
Item G, as far as parking, as we showed the plans, we have different peaks between the two locations. We think we'd have enough parking regardless. But you've seen amended plans and can agree to have our number of seats and forestools to comply with this zoning, so we don't need a parking variance, is that?
That is correct, correct.
We're no longer asking, not variance, we're no longer asking for that waiver. H, all lots shall have private walkways to access the public sidewalk? No sidewalks proposed here, is that?
Correct, we're on Route 33, there are no sidewalks, and we're not proposing any sidewalks.
Right, so Ms. Bean then talks about the reasons for the variances under C. We've discussed the hardship. Do you think you've designed as well as you can in light of the hardship?
I think so. This, this, I think, you know, again, it's redundant, but, but the existing building, number one, is one of the draws for this area to be developed in this fashion. And second, the way the parking is laid out, this has the least impact on the parking, and aesthetically, we think it's the most appropriate space also. So we think the positives outweigh any negatives.
Now, Mr. Carr, under C2, and the planner lays it out very, you know, we agree with, obviously. The purpose of zoning can be advanced when the deviation, when the benefits from the application substantially outweigh any detriments. It's a little shift in the weighing that goes on under C1. But what are the benefits as a planner that you see to this application? And how do they substantially outweigh any of the detriments, if that's what your opinion is?
Well, I think the benefits are numerous, and Mr. Cooper had already talked about the benefits just as serving the community with a dining area and one that is enhanced in the summer. And he's talked at length about how the restaurant operates better in the winter or closer to capacity in the winter than the summer. I think this will help that, and I think it'll be a nice draw into this area. That's number one, aesthetics, and we talked about, and I think the architect and Mr. Cooper did a fantastic job of carrying the theme of the cabin through to this side. You can see in this rendering, for instance, the smokehouse area. The end, if you look at the gable end, it's open, and it's got large timber beams in there. So when you're sitting in there, the posts have some heavy beams in there. So it's all carried through, even internally, the stand-up bar where the TVs and woodshed are carry the log cabin look interior inside. So when you're sitting inside, you get that aesthetic. So I really think this is one that the positives outweigh the negatives substantially.
Mr. Carr, just one final thing. I think we've covered the review letters and, you know, as we've through this. So the final question I have, we're looking at a rendering that has landscaping and has fences, it has greenery, it has flowering trees, et cetera, certain colors in the architecture. Is what we see here, what, how township is going to get, are all those elements actually detailed in your plans and part of the, you know, something that we'll have to do?
Yes, absolutely. You know, the lawn area, the open lawn area there, we have shade trees. I don't know if the architectural rendering picks every single tree that we had in there. There were some suggestions in your engineer's report for some changes of species and some additional notes on landscaping stops and such, and we agree all of those. So this is substantially what you will see as the final product.
And one final thing, as far as the guardrail that you've discussed, we would agree to provide schematics and plans and details to the satisfaction of the board engineers so that satisfied that it'll do the job.
Yeah, yes, we would.
All right, thank you. I have nothing further, Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. I will open up questions from board professionals.
A couple of questions. Signage, are there any changes to signage?
We don't have, there's no signage visible from the street. So any signage that is part of the site is only going to be visible from the site or the parking lot. And that signage is directional signage, menus, things of that nature.
Mr. Carr, just to be clear, is there signage that is not depicted on the submitted plans?
Well, I'm guessing you're directing that to Mr. Butler?
Well, whoever, whoever wants to answer me.
Okay, the elevations, the elevations that are part of the architectural package show signage on the building as well as the areas of which.
Well, I just, my question is, is there signing, signage that is anticipated that is not depicted on the plans?
No.
No, there would be no new signs, the signs that are there are the signs that are there. All right. So I mean, you.
Free-standing sign down the road here, but that's, but we're not adding any signage to the street or anything visible from, anything additional than what's on the drawings, nothing additional on what's on.
Okay.
Okay, and I know, Mr. Carr, you had indicated you were amenable to the landscape comments, but just, just to confirm, you're amenable to all the technical comments in our.
Yes, yes, we are.
And as it relates to stormwater management, just briefly, the existing patterns will be maintained even with the proposed.
Yes, actually, actually, there's no change in the runoff patterns or the way drainage works now. That'll be maintained, and as I indicated, we're actually slightly reducing it, so there's a positive net effect, minimal, but at least in a positive side.
So I have nothing further than at this time.
Christine, do you have anything?
Um, I think really my only outstanding comment from the letter, which this is actually probably a question for Mr. Cooper. But while the testimony tonight has been given that this, this site will be operational by, you know, one user as one full site, I think it's just important to put that on the record and ensure that the different portions of this site are not able to operate independently from each other.
We wouldn't consider that, and this is not unlike some of our other locations, the West Side Patio Bar, the Ninth Avenue Pier, which is an amenity to the Marina Grill, so we have no problem with that.
Thank you.
And what's the status of the septic, the updated status?
We're working with the health department in redesigning the septic system for the entire site.
So we would, of course, need Board of Health approval.
Correct, correct.
We've condition of approval.
Correct.
And we believe we'll be able to do that.
Yes.
And if we can't, we can't build, it's that simple.
Perfect.
Any other questions? Seeing none, Eileen, I guess, or Mr. Jackson, is there any other testimony in closing before we open it up to the public for questions of the testimony that was given tonight?
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no further witnesses, of course. I'd like to be able to respond and perhaps say a word or two before the board deliberates if we get to that point, but thank you very much. That's all we have for now.
Thank you. Eileen, I guess at this time, we will open it up to the public. I see there's four members out there if they have any questions.
It would be, Mr. Chairman, would be questions or comments?
Questions or comments.
Can Mr. Jackson stop sharing his screen so I can see who's in the audience, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the chairman has opened the meeting up for members of the public. If anyone has any questions or comments on this application, please use the raise your hand feature, and I'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to be sworn in and give your name and address. Again, the hearing is open to the public. If anyone has questions or comments, please use the raise your hand feature.
I don't see anybody, Eileen.
I don't either.
Okay, I'm going to close the portion to the public. Mr. Jackson, the floor is yours for closing remarks.
Thank you. Just very briefly, we're hopeful that Howe Township sees Chefs International as a great addition to the community. They want to make an additional investment. We think it will provide a very nice amenity for not only people in Howe Township, but in the surrounding community to have outdoor dining. And we're hopeful that when the board drives by this and you see it, they will be very pleased you approved it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Sorry, Chief.
It's okay.
Roll call. Chief Hendrick?
Yes, absolutely. Great job.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. De Castro?
Yep, yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes, I'm looking forward to the amendment, yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Husser?
Fantastic presentation, absolutely.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
As a new neighbor in the community, we really are going to work hard to make you proud.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Looking forward to that barbecue.
Definitely.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
You too.
Master plan update. Mr. Bivai isn't here. Councilwoman, do we know anything on that?
Mr. De Castro?
We did have. Detective Jennifer Beem, our planner, went over specific details of what we will be doing on the circulation element. We're also going to be making a recommendation to the board of adding the environmental resource inventory to our conservation element. And we are going to be working on some small things in the, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, our land use element.
That is correct, Mr. Chair. And in terms of sequence, the easiest of those to do is the amendment to the conservation element. So I'd be looking for that to be coming down the pike relatively soon. Jen is working on evaluating various aspects. Jen is working on evaluating, uh, various aspects of the circulation plan. Some of that, uh, dovetails with, uh, school being in session. So there are timing, uh, practicalities associated with that.
So thank you. Um, Ron, is there any reason to go into executive session?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No moves.
Okay.
Second.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Have a great night.
Enjoy the thunderstorms this evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay.